This is the July 10th, 2024 meeting of the Accretional Public Library Board of Trustees. We have audio taped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today is the minutes from June 12th. Does anyone have any questions or clarifications on those minutes? I hear nothing. Can we get a motion?
Motion for the second.
All in favor? Back. Next on the agenda, we have the budgets.
So what you have in front of you is the final, so just say budget at FY '24. I pretty much maxed out on patient service supervisor position. Labor technicians was almost down to the dollar. The only one that had some wiggle room in is a children's room assistant because that position is vacant. We only spent 57.5% of that line. And then longevity also ended up at 68% spent because of the departure of the previous director. So in total for salaries, we ended up spent 91.5% of what was budgeted for FY '24. As for the operating, I am still needing... I came from town hall this morning. There was no energy bill, so I still need June's energy bill. I will be writing a memo to the accountant about outstanding invoices for FY '24. So that also includes energy and the telephone. So I'm missing June's telephone bill, and that will include AT&amp;T and Verizon. Other than that, office supplies, I couldn't spend it out because of the spending freeze that was initiated back in May. Materials, I was able to max out, which is great for us. I got that 16... I spent 16% of our total budget on materials. And then travel, because we were short staffed, there's just too much going on. I didn't attend any meetings outside the library. I did attend a few on Zoom that I could. But other than that, we are 91.6% spent for operating. So I don't think this will change once I get those invoices for energy and telephone. But that's pretty much the summary for FY '24. Any questions about the budget?
I think you did really well, especially making sure that the material with the 16% is, I guess, being the first time that you've been through this. I think, you know...
So salaries, unfortunately, I can't do anything about that. But next year, I know to not be so conservative and spend faster.
For the materials.
Yeah, materials and so forth. But yes, that's where we ended up.
Anyone have any questions or anything? Okay. Can we get a motion?
Motion to accept the budget. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business. We have an update regarding the FY '25 budget.
So this will be very quick. So I attended a town meeting on Monday, June 17th. Our FY '25 budget passed, and it will be $299,508. And even though it's slightly less than FY '24, we will do our best. I will do our best with working with it. And just, I'm gonna keep putting this out there. You know, we did take a cut to help the town because they were trying to balance it out. So next year, I hope we keep that in mind when we're doing FY '26. And that's it for the FY '25 budget. Any questions?
Happy that passed.
Yes, yes.
The budget's easing down.
Do it all over again.
And if you have anything on the FY '25? All right. Moving on to the next order of old business, the portico.
Yeah, it is old business.
It is so... It should be a cheap business. In so many ways.
I set this up yesterday.
Okay, yes.
And within the next two weeks, he's gonna set up stages so I can get it started. And then I'll coordinate with Dan about pulling the finished product out of the basement and dropping it in place.
Great.
So fingers crossed that by the first week, it should be up.
Excellent.
That would be great. That would be hugely...
Sure.
The DPW is gonna send... They're gonna get the equipment. I remember you had said that. They're gonna help with the equipment.
Yeah, I'm gonna use a backhoe or something to lift it in place because it's gonna have to be adjusted when it's up there.
Oh, yeah.
And so heavy, it'd be easier with a fork, like a backhoe.
Makes sense. Hopefully done by the beginning of August.
Go straight. I'll check right for the next problem.
Oh, gosh. Okay, on to new business. We have the library's flower beds.
So this is sort of old slash new business. So last meeting, I mentioned that we were going to be put on... I sent an email to the certification committee about our flower beds to see if they could come to take some of the weeds, make it look pretty. So that following day, the certification committee actually met. So I watched the video. No one has reached out to me, so this is just going by what I saw on the video on YouTube. And they believe that reading should be done by those who maintain the grass in the building. So bottom line is, they don't want anything to do with maintaining the flower beds on our property. With that being said, Dave did come that week to look... Quickly needed with a weed whacker to care of it very quickly. Did some maintenance on it. And I did discuss with him about trimming the shrubberies because they're overgrown there right now. And he did say he will do it, he's just backup. So I will keep you guys updated on that. He did mention that he has wood trim at the town's swap area that they... That equipment or materials. He thought that something that would look nice would be to take some of the wooden materials, he would stain it, and then he will dig a little trench and then put the wood there. And then you could put mulch in there. So I know there was mulch at one point in the flower beds. It hasn't been remulched since I've been here, so that's a year. But I'm not sure about the wood trim. The only reason I'm not sure is that I'm concerned with it being a trip hazard. He said that it would just be like an inch above. But I don't know if that's just going to contain everything and things would just, you know, get out of hand in there, or we should just leave it as it is. So I said that I would mention it to the trustees to see if you guys had a better vision of what he's proposing than I do. But, you know, I can't, you know, because it's on the library property, we have to vote on it. So I'm opening the floor to discussion on if this wood trim along the flower beds would help us in any way or make the property look better.
How close would that come to the walkway?
So it would be flush against the walkway.
Okay.
So you have the stone here, and then the wood would be right against...
Right against the wall.
Yes, and he said he has a tool, I already forgot the name of it, that he can just go along the...
Right along with that?
Yes, and then he would just, he would stain the wood so it would look nice, and then just put the wood down along the flower beds. And then he said he could put mulch and so forth. So I don't know... I'm concerned about it.
I mean, it sounds like it would look nice.
Yeah.
But we're talking about weeds. Like, the weeds aren't gonna see the wood and not grow. So it's not gonna grow, right?
No, I know.
So I mean, if we were talking about holding mulch back, I think it's a good idea, I think. But I mean, we're not talking about weeds, right?
Yes.
Isn't that the point, you put the edge so that you can mulch it?
And then to help prevent the weeds? But you'd have to put something else, right? You couldn't just put the mulch.
I don't know.
Because the weeds is still gonna come through the mulch if you don't... Right? I don't know. I don't know. I'm sorry.
So I can just say we just hold off on it.
Well, what do we... I mean, what does everyone else think? What do we...
One more thing you're gonna have to maintain too.
I appreciate the effort and the idea, but I don't know. I just see it as a trip hazard as it is. And then you have the lights that are along the thing. Not that people are falling on it, but I'm having somebody trip.
Yes. Exactly.
My thought is, if in your opinion that it would be a trip hazard...
That was my first concern. I'm sure it will look nice, but to me, it's just...
I think they could still put a little bit of mulch and probably spray it with something.
Yeah, they would... You can see that every once in a while, if there's a really, really bad storm with the wind, it'll be mulch on this side. It's nothing too extreme. So the issue is that things spill over at all.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it at all. It's just the weeds, it just looks. And then he will say, he did say he will come eventually to remove it. To be honest with you, I... There's nothing wrong with them, but they're just, if nobody wants to maintain them, I'm almost pushing to just cut them down.
Right. Right. But then they're just gonna get so... I mean, I'm confused.
What do you care about?
Good question. So I've been told numerous things. One was their town actually did hire someone at one point. It was a part-time job or something in the summer. This woman would just come and routine. And then we also had somebody who unfortunately passed away, who also did a lot for the library and would kind of just go out there and just...
She was just here a lot.
Yes, she was doing this. I mean, one time, I remember coming here, one of the bushes, when it was maintained, looked like a no, and it was the best in ever. It was her doing it. But that's... I mean, she set the precedent, but at one point, there was somebody part-time who was just in the summer taking care of it.
They had the two kids helping at the gym there at one point. And they would mow the lawn, and they would do all that stuff. So then, you know, they don't have that anymore here, so...
You know, it's on Dave's radar. He's just stretched so far. And, you know, my... I mean, right now, it's not so, so bad because he did go through it and cleaned it a little bit. But the bushes need to be trimmed, and plus, I don't know what's in there.
You know what? Yeah, right.
And once it starts growing up, it moves to that point now, going to the foundation. You know, I know I'm exaggerating, but, you know, things can happen. And we do have a groundhog that lives here.
That's great.
We all have those.
Okay. Yes, we live by the book drop, by the way, so...
Have we named them? We should have a groundhog named after events. Name the groundhog, right? What's the name of the groundhog?
I've noticed the groundhog until...
I'm interested to see what someone's... Suggestions would be?
He was spotted yesterday, so when we closed, he's usually out by the book drop, eating the grass and so forth. But his hole is right, it's massive, it's just perky circle. And I was like, who is this?
I wonder if we can get him to eat weeds.
Any place where people would walk in? Not at all. Nope, so that is... That I would have been concerned about. No, it's not. And we first saw him by the front door, and he would not move. We were like, you know, just...
Oh, yes, he definitely needs a... And he needs like a scholarly name, like a book-reading name or something.
There's always, you can use Dewey, like Dewey Decimal System or something.
I think we gotta work that, we gotta put that down. Name of the groundhog.
Name maybe.
There we go. Fantastic. Does anyone have anything else they wanna talk about as far as the flower beds? The dehumidifier system.
So this one is... So on...
When did it get it?
So our system downstairs in the cellar service our dehumidifier system by Pioneer Basement on Friday, June 14th. So the one-year preventative measure costs $214. So he was downstairs, did what he was doing, and then he came back up and he let me know that our dehumidifier system... So we have two in the basement. The one by the north side of the building is pulling air but not dehumidifying. That's even a word. So I asked him questions. I didn't get much in terms of answers of like, can we just... Can this be refixed? Can it be replaced? Can, you know, when they're patched for it? He's like, well, we recommend you to buy a new system. I have a recommendation when I received the invoice for the preventative service for $2,195. Yes. So I went downstairs yesterday for a totally different reason, and it's been very humid. It felt fine to me downstairs. So I don't know if we need to replace this as soon as possible. If there's maybe another company we could look at, or... I wasn't given much information of like, you know, what was going on with the dehumidifier. It was like, here, you can replace it, and this is what it is. So I am puzzled. I guess I'm stuck on this because I don't know when it has been working. I know it's on, I hear it, it's just, what he said, it's just not pulling... It pulls air, but it's just not doing the bit. So I am confused. So I guess what I need is a second or third opinion of maybe looking at the unit I'm in and determining, or maybe we can contact Pioneer Basement to see if there are other options. Do we need to dehumidify this downstairs? That's another thought. I am stopped. So I did pay the, obviously paid for preventative funding, and right now, this is where we're sitting with this. So it would be like a completely brand-new unit, I guess. And I don't even know if that includes labor. That could just be the actual unit. So this could be much more than what it is. So I guess what I'm saying is that I have more research to do on this, but, you know, I want everyone to be aware that there could be a potential big-ticket item in the future. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on this?
Yeah, just a quick question. My assumption is that there are two units there. Somebody analyzed it somewhere along the line and said it couldn't be number one.
Okay.
And so that's probably why the two units are there. And then I think the idea, having somebody else take a look at it, makes perfect sense.
Okay. Okay. Would you suggest we go to a... I don't know if there's other companies that do this, or just...
Actually, we need some companies, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to create some companies to hook them in, and they'll...
Okay, okay.
And most of the time, they give you, it's a free quote. Like, they'll come and look at it, like, because you're not gonna ask them to fix it. You're asking them to just look at it to tell, give you their opinion. So usually, it's just a quote.
Okay.
So you can call them if you want, just to kind of get a...
Just to get a bigger picture of this. And if they all say the same thing, then obviously, you know, we might too.
And then you can find out from these people if that's just the unit or if that includes the installation of what that was.
Okay. I can definitely do that. All right, so we can revisit this when they get more information.
One more question probably on that. With the heating system, do you have a maintenance schedule, like tune-ups every year?
So with their HVACs, I haven't seen anything except the filters get cleaned by Rick. Other than that, they... That is run on a software on a computer. It's actually web cloud-based now. And they do everything remotely. I think before I started, there was something did happen with them, and they physically came here. But there's no information of like a yearly checkup or something with the dehumidifier. But all I know is that the units just get, the filters come out and they get cleaned.
Yeah, just one of them, in long-range checklist, monthly or semi-annually, however, heating systems, all the other operating systems. And then in the long-term capital improvement, you say that, well, this year, expect this to kind of go out and start the... That when you look at it, it was like, hey, it's broken.
Yeah, I remember it here last meeting, but last meeting, I did have a rough draft of a maintenance plan, and I handed it over to the town of the building issues and so forth. But I can expand on that because I think all I included was the cleaning of the HVAC systems. But like, I know the big units outside, I haven't, you know, I don't think anyone has... Or unless there's an issue, maybe this company goes out there and look at, but we're not touching those, so to say, just the interior ones.
So with the heating and air conditioning system, they review it by computer?
They have, yes. So it's a software that they... Like, I can go in the software and I can control each panel, each unit.
Right.
And they can go in and see if something's malfunctioning. Sometimes the units just completely die, and they'll go and start it, and then I have to go downstairs because there's also a giant control panel downstairs that is just turning on and off. There's a light system down there that indicates what's going on. So a majority of the time, when something does happen, they can just troubleshoot it on the computer or over the phone.
When you say "they," that's the people that solve it?
Yes, the company is called Air Masters. I don't know where they're located, but...
Okay.
So, and the system is also, it's a program, it also says Air Masters, and it has the layout of the building. That company, I know, designed their program for this building when we moved here. Yes, yes.
Maybe it would be worth asking them, recommendation for onsite tune-ups or maintenance?
Okay.
I know they don't take a lot of maintenance. They're not like a oil-fired, heat-fired heating system, but I assume they must need some.
Is something wrong?
I'm assuming, I don't know what the community center had. You didn't have... So this room... So it'll be 10 years next year. Yes, so 10 years that that's there.
Yeah, that's not your long term, too.
Yep.
Probably got you over the barrel, something wrong.
I know if something major happened before my arrival with them, and there was, probably voted on that, but it was an invoice that was much more than what they said. I don't know exactly what went wrong, if they just completely shut off. But that was, you know, probably a year and a half ago or so. But, I mean, they're not perfect, but they do what they're supposed to do. Like today, on a day like today.
They actually do. They're a pretty good system.
They are, they are, they are. And I like that I can control each room separately. So this room can be colder, we can have a study room warmer and so forth. But we have access to control each temperature of each room. So that's the good part in having the software that was designed specifically for us.
Yeah.
Anyone have anything else? I'm just gonna go a little bit out of order today, go down to the directive report.
Still, here in the heat of summer, very quickly, I'm just gonna pinpoint for some items that have happened over the past month. We are busy, 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 busy. I have offered a position, the vacant position, for the children's room assistant. I just, this morning, received the welcome packet. I'm waiting for them to pick it up, get that all filled out, and then hopefully, hopefully, we'll have a start date on July 22nd.
I assume they accepted the position.
Yes. So they did accept it.
I mean, like, we have a welcome packet, they're doing, wanna come and do this?
Yes, so they... I got the appointment letter from the town administrator. They accepted the position, passive worry. I was just waiting on the welcome packet, received it today, and hopefully, we'll pick it up soon. But unfortunately, they're away next week, so that's why I'm really iffy if we can get the start date as of 22nd. But I'm excited to have, not before, a full staff again. And I'm excited to also have a children's room assistant. So we can hopefully start doing story times, offer more children's programs. So we'll just have to wait and see. This year, for summer reading, I received every grade reading list, which is fantastic. I will say patrons have been so proactive about summer reading. It's the first time I've ever seen them coming in, asking for their books. So I created a new color-coded system for books that are on a summer reading list. So it's just simply the color that corresponds with the grade is either on the shelf of where the book is or on the book. So it's a little, it's a trial and error, but I received some feedback from parents, and they like it. It's simple. It's not 100% foolproof, but it gives them the ability to go in the room, look at the list. There is a binder that has the keys, the stickers to each grade, and the titles, or the suggested titles. So if they need something further, we can definitely help them. So that has been working well. Another thing that happened on July 1st is... Okay, so we're already starting state 80. I've been working on the simpler, when I have the time. I've been working on the simpler survey items, and I am waiting on the statistics from sales. So hopefully, that will be done soonish, but I have until August 15th to complete it. I'll have to double-check that. One item that I think I might have mentioned in the last meeting is that we received a complaint about the handrail outside where the deck is. Dave came in. I wasn't in when he came in, but the top part, he glued down, so that's completely glued. So if you put your hand on it, it would just come off, which is a hazard, especially if you're using it for balance. But it's glued down, it's solid. The railing itself is a little wobbly, so he suggested, and he will do when he has the time, he's going to sort of anchor it to the floor so that it's not so wobbly. It's fine, you can use it, it can hold your weight, it's just slightly starting to do one of these little movements. So I will update, send an update, and that gets done. This was something that we have to be a little bit... I want everyone to be aware of. This was something that we have to be a little bit, I want everyone to be aware of, on this Monday, I received a text message from our custodian that we were being attacked by ants. So in the front hallway, there were ants coming in from the floorboard, flying ants. This has happened a few years ago, I was told, they thought it was termites, but it wasn't in God, I think due to the humidity, people have been having issues with ants. So when I came in on Monday, the ants were gone from the floor, but up in the ceiling, the light bulb was covered. They were going in through the ceiling, they weren't flying around, they were coming in through the ceiling, I don't know how, so they were just in there basically all dying, so it was almost covered in black because of all the ants. So I called proficient, Eric, could you please come here? I had someone in here maybe an hour and a half after I called, they came in, they sprayed a solution on the floorboard, he didn't know what to do with the top part. So he said that what's happening is that they probably got disturbed from their nest and they're finding their first heat source, that light stays on because it's like, I think a floodlight, emergency light, so I went down to say, I just think I could turn it off, I couldn't, the fuse is just, it wasn't working, so. So we, I closed that area, I had that entryway closed after he sprayed the chemicals, but I kept it closed the whole evening. I had this blocked, so people had to use the side door, which was fine, I had no complaints, it was just, I just, it was happening all at once. And then the following Monday, I asked Rick to clean the cobbles because the ants were going in the cobbles, and I came in, I wasn't sure if the light fixture could be removed, I came in, he had the light fixture cleaned on the desk, he removed it, and we have, there's still some there, there, you can tell they are like on their last leg, but it's not too extreme, but it was, it was, it was wild. So right now, the light, the light fixture's on, the glass that holds it is currently off because if I put, if we put it back, they're just gonna go back in there, so I'm gonna leave it off for a week, the light is on, it's an emergency light, so that, that's fine, but today, it looks much better, nothing there, so I'm blaming this on the, the amount of humidity that we've had, but it was just something that I guess has happened in the past, so it was just something that just happens, but I will say proficient came and saved the day for, you know, spraying what they did, Rick did a fabulous job cleaning it up, and then proficient will be back in a week to check on it. And they left us a light, but I removed the light because I just don't wanna leave this type of light, it's an open light, it's, I don't wanna leave it overnight, I just think it's a fire. So it's aside, and right now we're doing, we're doing much better than we were on Monday. And then just very quickly, so our summer reading program, right now we have over two hundred participants that range from ages three to adults, so we are doing our reading bee and our scratch tickets, so that has been fantastic. We've, our traffic in the building has been astronomical, yesterday, we, you know, we opened at ten thirty, in ten minutes, we had twenty-five people in the building. So it's summer, it is, it's packed here, we had two summer concerts, both concerts had well over three hundred and twenty-five people attending. Yes, so we do have a concert tonight, we have Matt York, who is doing songs from Willie Nelson, and that will be at six. Tomorrow, we have, we're bringing back Flying High Dogs, who these are border collies, who do all kinds of crazy tricks at three P M. This Saturday, on the thirteenth, we have old time drill sessions with Jeff England, so that's just, if you can play an issue, you can come in and jam. That's what I was hoping it is. And we are, still have, our summer concerts on the seventeenth, the twenty fourth, twenty fourth, and the thirty first. And then lastly, I wanna highlight, I was recommended a program on a lister, so we have a light keeper coming in, whose name is Sally Snowman. She is a retired light keeper as of last December, she was the light keeper of Boston Light, which is a lighthouse right outside the harbor, that has been around for three hundred years. So she's coming in to talk about her experience, and I think it's absolutely unique, and I can't wait for this. And this will be on Monday, July twenty ninth at six P M. So I am looking forward to it, and she's been on Channel Five, she's been on the news radio recently, and she's been on PBS, so she's, it's gonna be fantastic, yes.
It's gonna be fun.
So that's all I have for my reports. Any questions on my directive report or any announcements that I have, yes?
Have a comment?
Of course, yes.
Three thousand twenty-six people came into this building and chose.
Yep.
And they all left too?
I mean, it's, it helps with the, the, and I'm sure, you know, we don't have an exact number because we're just counting it as we see, but it's been, it's been very busy, very busy, you know, it's summer, so it's expected, and we also, yesterday we had the stamp, the stamp to hunt, so it was also bustling in here, so I, last year, you know, I started right in the beginning of the summer, so I couldn't, I did a few programs, but this year, I made sure that we had programs and plus, because we don't have a children's assistant, to supplement events for, for children. So yes, it's been very busy, and I will say that the summer concerts have brought a lot of new faces, the friends have been doing a wonderful job, they're doing the fifty-fifty raffle during the summer concert series, and it's, we'll see how today goes, you know, I don't know if we'll be over three hundred again, but it's, it's, word is out there that this.
Parking's low.
They are, parking, you know, it, you know, we're limited, but people have been, you know, they come in early, get a park, and then the whites family also have allowed us to use, yes. So I'm usually on the corner at the, during the concerts, so if the parking lot's full, I let people know, you can come in, drive through, and white parking right there, see those big trucks, you can park in that parking lot.
That's really nice.
Yes, yes, the maquette was here for the first concert, she's like, yeah.
Great, I used to second also.
Yes, yeah, oh, good.
It's awesome.
Yes, so, there's a lot going on.
That's real. All right. All right, any questions about the directive report? Now we'll go back to new business, we are going to discuss an open meeting law complaint from Mr. Patrick Higgins, which was dated and received by the town on June seventeen. We just have to, we need to acknowledge that, that we received the complaint and that we are allowing KP Law to respond on our behalf. So if I can get a motion for that? We, we need to, right, I just need a motion to, we need to acknowledge the receipt of the complaint from Mr. Patrick Higgins and to allow KP Law to respond on our behalf.
So I'll make a motion, acknowledge the receipt of the complaint from Mr. Patrick Higgins, and that would also allow the law firm to respond to it. Thank you.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now we will discuss the twelve month review of Elizabeth, our library director, which was previously discussed in executive session, and it should not have been. So Elizabeth is welcome to stay, but she's choosing to excuse herself, and also John was not here during the executive session, so he will not be participating in this discussion. So we are just going to redo what we did in the executive session right now.
So before we get to that, what was the complaint issue?
So.
You need to wait till the law firm responds to it?
Nope, so the complaint was, is that this was not a reason to go into executive session.
Okay.
That was the, the whole complaint, was that this should have been done in open session, not in executive session.
Okay.
And so to right the wrong per se, now we have to, we're gonna, we're gonna redo this and try to, try to do it as closely as we can to what was in executive session, it's not gonna be exactly, because we didn't work for word break down what we said, but at least it will, we're gonna discuss and go over everything that we did then, now.
Okay.
And then going forward, we won't have an executive session for that, we'll do it in open session, like we were supposed to.
Okay.
So, yep, nope, valid question.
So can we discuss here in this section, what we had for results?
Uh, yes, so we, so we just have to, any comments that were made in that session about anything that we went over, that's what we'll talk about right now.
Okay.
So I will, as I did the last time, I'll read through all, each individual thing, and then if anyone has any comments, and we need to discuss what the outcome is or the ratings for the one to five, one being the unacceptable, two needs improvement, three effective, four highly effective, and five outstanding. So, okay, so preparing and managing the budget, we have necessary work is completed in a timely manner prior to presentation to the board.
I think on that one, last time we evaluated her, it was not applicable, but now it is, and I think probably she's doing okay, but needs to work a little harder, I did, I missed the necessary materials by Friday, sometimes we don't get the information to the day before that, and, but she is doing a good job of getting us the materials, but I think, I know she's been overwhelmed, maybe encouraged her more to get us the paperwork by Friday, give us a little more time to go over it and prepare anything we need to do for the book.
Okay. So what do we want to, anybody have anything else, what do we wanna rate that?
The only thing I would say is that would be changing, it was so recent in May, she reacted to the kind of counterstanding, you know, this, you know, do that, so she's certainly what they, and so from that point of view, I think that was good, I know this really needs to look, she is saying.
Okay, so would we, would we rate that effective, where she meets performance expectations, or highly effective where she exceeds performance expectations?
I think three, effective.
Everyone agree with that? The next one is the budget covers all necessary expenses. You're giving that one, so five for that one. Funds are effectively allocated. Five for that one as well. ARRs and state aid reports are accurate and complete and submitted to the V L C in a timely manner? That's, that's true. Yep, she definitely, they were both submitted on time last year as well. Other funding sources are explored and applied for as appropriate. I know she, she had, last year, she had applied for grants for a couple of things when she first started, so my opinion on that one is to continue to do that, I think, she did a great job, but I think she should definitely continue to do that, I mean.
Yes.
If, that's what I would say, so maybe four, and, okay. Managing the staff, positive management, staff relations are maintained. Five? When grievances are filed, they are justified. I haven't, I haven't been informed of any grievances, so won't, but not applicable. Professional awareness, innovative methods of service delivery and technical processes are studied thoroughly. I think she's very savvy about what's going on.
I think so, with the color coding that she talked about for the summer reading at the point.
Absolutely, that was the first thing I noticed, well, after the flying ants, that was the first thing I noticed when I was here on Monday, was the color coding, and I made sure to mention it, and I hadn't heard about it before that, so it was, it was eye catching, as soon as you walk in, so that was really good. Okay, innovations are implemented only after they fit the needs of the institution or are proven to be cost effective. And I think she did, I think she does a great job on that. We, five on that one. The director maintains inadequate knowledge of current library science practices, I think she's definitely up with the, up with the times. Staff are encouraged to maintain an awareness of technological advances in the profession. I think she encourages all of the staff to do that, as well with the different training opportunities.
Yes.
Everyone else agree?
Yes.
Okay. Collection development, collection development policy is up to date. It is. Selection and reading policies are systematically implemented. I think she just finished the reading thing, I think she's always looking to see what we can leave, so we can get the newer stuff in here, since we're not so big, so we, five on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Director determines user needs and warrants and translates these into appropriate acquisitions and services. I think she's always trying to see what this, what the people want.
Yes.
Okay, so five on that one as well?
Five.
The collection is current and reflects present community needs and interests. I think, I don't think you can get, we can't afford not to be current with the things that we have, so I think she does a really good job.
And that's reflected in the materials, conditions.
Absolutely, so we can put a five on that one, okay. Implementation of board decisions, board decisions are implemented on a timely basis, I think she takes them in runs to put them. Director displays initiative, and I think, I think she does a really good job.
Yes.
Okay. Director is objective in making the necessary decisions, I think she weighs all options.
Yes.
Okay, five on that one. Director is consistent in decisions that affect the staff and or the public, I mean, we were just talking about, I know it wasn't last time, but we were just talking about even just the tripping hazard of the, the. Director fully and enthusiastically supports board decisions.
Absolutely, yes.
So five on that one. Director sets an example for the staff through professional conduct, high principles, and a business-like approach. She's very good, so we'll do five on that one. Use of the library, effectively communicates library services to the public, I think she does a fantastic job with the website.
At least you said the website and the newsletter.
The newsletter, right, and the Facebook posts, and, I mean, I think she does a fantastic job. A proper and realistic balance is maintained between promotion of services and budget constraints.
Absolutely, yeah.
She's always within that too, okay, five on that one. Circulation trends and in-house use are adequately analyzed. So for that one, I think, I think she probably maybe should take the statistics that she gives us into account a little bit, or talk about them, or maybe try to incorporate that into what she does. Right, the school, that's right, yeah, so circulation, well, I was just thinking about the circulation trends, like, if we, if this time last year, it was, it was a lot of children's books, then maybe, like, what's the trend, like, is it, do we, does she need to promote more of that this time next year? I was just a thought.
Well, you can sort of see that if you look at the statistics in comparison from June twenty-three to June twenty-four.
Right.
You're seeing a lot more usage of the ebooks, audiobooks, and magazines.
Exactly, so my thought is, is that do, do we, are they being, like, are they, I mean, I'm sure they're being analyzed to a degree, but are they being adequately analyzed to make sure that we're with the trends? That's my, was my only thought.
I think she's had a lot to deal with this last year, everything was moved for her first time around, so I think probably she couldn't devote as much to that as she would like. Maybe if we gave her her four, it's some encouragement, encouragement to look at that line, and just what you're saying, you know, pay attention, and there's a little change between this year and last year, and she hasn't had the luxury of time to do that.
Right.
Maybe by us identifying that.
As just something.
Send her in that direction. I mean, she does a great job.
She definitely does.
Highly effective is probably more appropriate.
Does everyone agree with this?
Yes.
Four, okay. Information about new services are effectively communicated to the public.
I would say that goes hand-in-hand with the communication that she does on all issues.
Absolutely. So five on that one?
Five.
Okay. And then we have utilization of staff. Peak service hours have been identified and staff deployed according, deployed accordingly.
Excellent.
Okay. Uh, community development. The director is active in the community. I think she's definitely getting there. I think-
See, that's something you grow.
I, right, I was gonna say, I don't think you can just be, and I think, um, I think maybe, uh, establishing stronger relationships with the schools, um, will definitely help.
Absolutely.
I think she's doing, especially with the summer reading, I think that was, the connection was established. But I think now, really building on that connection, and especially like during the year, meeting with like maybe the younger grades and, you know, um, getting people library cards that might not have them, or something, you know, maybe that would, um, build up people. She's gotta get her name out there so that a lot of the kids know her, and, but that's hard to do when you're, when you're first.
Brand new, yeah.
Brand new. So, I mean, she's done a great job so far, but I think, um-
Also letting her to stay for answers.
Yes.
Including them. Which, again, she's had plenty, oh, not plenty, actually, without having a children's assist.
Yep. So do you wanna do with, you wanna do four, or, uh, or I was gonna say a three? Either one? Um, I mean, she needs it. I don't, does she exceed it?
I think, okay, three, three.
Three? Are you okay with three?
Yeah.
Okay. The director is visible to large segments of the population. So again, I think she just hasn't had the time. I think she just needs to get, oh, she went to her first town meeting, which is great, but I think she's just gotta get out, she's gotta get out there a little bit more. And I don't think she's had the time to do that. So, um, maybe a three on that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay. Um, the director is a bit-
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay.
But where else could she go?
Well, I think, like, for instance, now that we have the, the, like, the summer, the summer, uh, concerts, she's got people, she's here, she's out there, she's-
She is out there.
So, which is good.
She's doing it.
But I don't think this time last year, she was just, she was only here like a month.
Yeah.
So I don't think, so now, it's, hey, I'm the library director, hi, how you doing? Like, it's almost like meeting and meeting.
It's small town.
Oh, no, absolutely. But I think by going, like, to town meetings, she was at town meetings, she's visible, she's, and then by getting into the schools, people are gonna be like, oh, look, there's Miss Elizabeth, there's Miss Elizabeth. People are gonna know her wherever she goes, and not just in town.
I think a three is okay, but we have to tell her what to do.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Oh, no, absolutely. So, so after we, after we do all this, I'll compile all this, and I've taken notes and everything. And so I'll sit down with her and just, you know, explain to her exactly what our conversation was here, and, you know, just ways to improve. I mean, I just, like you, I think she's doing a great job. Um, and I think there's very little here that she needs to improve on, because I think she's doing such a great job. Um, but there's always something to improve on.
And, and I think those things about getting out in the community, you know, our stressing that to her, um, gives her the opportunity to put that into place as time goes on.
Absolutely. Or, or strive for something, or, you know, work a little harder to, to do, you know, this or that. But, you know, I mean, she's loving meeting all the people out at the, the summer concerts, and she's, she's always out and about, like, in the library itself, you know, talking to people. So I think people are, they're definitely getting to know her.
Yeah.
And it's gonna take time, but I think she's, she's getting it. So, um, the director is available for speaking engagements in the community. I, I think that's a non-applicable because, I mean, I don't really think, like, I mean, she's available, like, if the school asks her, she'll, you know, or anyone, she'll go, but I don't necessarily, I mean, you don't think of a library director as having speaking engagements, I would think. Is everyone okay with it?
Yeah.
Applicable?
Yeah.
Activity in professional organizations. Director participates and holds off, holds office in professional organizations as appropriate. And she, uh, is a member of a few organizations. So, everyone okay with five for that?
Yes.
Um, we have policy recommendations to the board. Policy recommendations are necessary and appropriate to the efficient operation of the library. Um, I don't believe that she has had to do that, so.
There's a need for it at this point, I'd say.
An A at this point, okay. Um, trustees are informed of new developments and important news reported in library correspondence and literature to provide them with the necessary background to make informed policy decisions.
She does that.
And I think she, I think she does that. So we're good with a five there?
Yeah.
Friends of the library. The director actively promotes the maintenance of a friends group.
Yes.
She, she definitely does that. Uh, the director and staff provides adequate support to the friends organization. She, she does that as well. Uh, the director delineates and/or helps define the role of the friends group.
Yes.
She does, she did a really good job of that. And the friends group has adequate explanation of its role in a relationship to the role of the board. And I think they have to stand the difference between that. So we, are we all good with fives for all of those?
Yeah.
Maintenance and construction of physical plants. Building and grounds are adequately maintained with the imposed budgetary constraints.
Absolutely, yes.
I think she does a great job of what she has.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do a five for that one. Establishing priorities. Director's recommended priorities are in concert with the library's plan as defined by the board. I think she's, she's right in line with.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, priorities appropriately reflect the community's needs.
I think, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Priorities reflect advanced planning. I think she's always trying to look ahead to make sure that we're not blindsided. Director's accomplishments reflect and relate to the short and long-range plans. And she's got, she's got her improvement schedule, and she's working on different things like that, so. Um, plans are updated on a continuous basis to reflect changing circumstances. So, do you have anything on that one?
I think she's-
Okay. Director provides adequate information to the board on the implementation and revision of short and long-term planning. I know she's working on the long-term planning, so she always gives us, uh, feedback. So are we okay with fives on all of those as well?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the end of that. So, um, as we did in the executive session last week, uh, last meeting, excuse me, we, um, we've now withdrew the director's evaluation. So I will, um, consolidate this, um, and meet with her to go over the, the responses, and, um, and then we will be all set until next year. Um, the only other thing I have is the next meeting will be Tuesday, August thirteenth at twelve-thirty. Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, if anybody have anything else that we need to discuss about anything? Okay. And if we have no other business?
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just back up to thanking Jen for staying on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Issue we had again with this, you know, complaint about the board, and Jen had to handle that. And we're just so grateful you stayed on.
Thank you, thank you. Well, thank you for, for helping out, and I appreciate it. So which is, which is good. And, um, and Jerry had come up with a fantastic idea, um, this week. She had suggested that we invite our board of selectmen and our finance committee to our summer concert series to, um, just show everyone that, hey, it's not just a building with bucks. We do a lot of things that we offer here, and we, um, are averaging over three hundred people per concert, which is absolutely amazing. So thank you for thinking of that. That was-
The list got right on.
And she did. She absolutely got right on. She sent it up to our, our selectmen. Hopefully, they'll be able to join us or at least stop in.
It's a good time, it's a good time to share it all.
And the time to share it all. So hopefully, they'll be able to stop in, check it out on a Wednesday, six o'clock for the next four weeks.
Still across the street.
Yeah, exactly.
That was the, for the first concert, we pulled up, and we were stunned.
Yeah. I can hear five because I have the coolers.
Right.
So they're saving me a spot, but there were already people here. Like, they weren't a minute, five o'clock.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was terrific.
And then people eating pizza in the yard, or people eating pizza over there.
And it's something to do, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's nice, it's, there's a nice breeze over here, so it's cool.
A lot of tree.
Right, it's free, it's, you know, music, it's great, something for everyone, and, uh, which is fantastic. So hopefully, our selectmen will be able to come down and address the, the town's board. Everyone's welcome. Come on down on Wednesdays at six o'clock for our free summer concert series. I believe it goes on for the next four weeks at least.
I can anticipate.
Okay, so even longer than I anticipated. So we, um, we have nothing else? Do you have anything else? All right, then we need a motion.
Motion, sir.
All right, uh, this, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This, uh, July tenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is one-thirty. Thank you.